Okay, so you want me to do the introduction? Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the night's town hall. My name is Deefer from H. Now I'll be your moderator for the evening. I'm a sophomore at the University of New Haven, majoring in...
And this is Amelie. This town hall is meant to give West Haven residents the chance to hear from and engage with Mayor Rossi on current issues impacting the West Haven community. Having these discussions and facilitating transparency is vital in creating a community of trust between the government and the people. I also wanted to point out how impressed the college and high school students of our commission have been with collegiality, respectfulness, and ability of Wesleys to engage in calm, deliberative, thoughtful and civil discussions on the issues and challenges that confront us today. In particular, we appreciate the fact that even when we disagree, we can do so in a respectful and thoughtful manner. With that being said, I would like to give a quick shout out and thank you to the members of the Mayor's Advisory Commission, our Commission Chair Brian Cow, and our Advisor Dr. Chris Haynes, who have all worked very hard to help organize this event. Before we begin, let please join me in the pleasure of leaving. I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as one. Thank you. Now, before we start, there are a few other things I would like to add. First, the ground rules for this town hall. After Mayor Rossi provides us with her update, we will take audience questions verbally by lighting up in front of the podium. All questions should relate to West Haven issues. Please remember to be respectful and use appropriate language. Regarding the questions, I will alternate between pre-succulent questions, in-person questions, and questions for the Facebook Live. Regarding pre-succulent questions that ran long, we decided to extract the question in the interest of time and be able to get as many questions as possible. Mr. Jaleel will time the questions. Each questioner will have sixty seconds to ask a question. Jaleel will hold up a signal when there are ten seconds remaining and when the time is up. These nuggets are included not only in the interest of time, but also to be fair so that everyone has a chance to ask a question. Once everyone has had a chance to ask a question, attendees can ask a second question. We ask that Mayor Rossi be allowed to answer all questions uninterrupted. If you choose to do so, you may ask one fifteen-second follow-up question. Finally, I would like to thank Mayor Nancy Rossi for being here tonight to engage with our fellow Wesleys. Mayor Rossi is the twelfth and first female mayor of West Haven. She has served as mayor since December two thousand seventeen. Please join me in welcoming Mayor Rossi.
Thank you, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here tonight. Welcome to my final town hall meeting. Since taking office in two thousand seventeen, town hall meetings have always been a great way to facilitate transparency and communication between the West Haven community and my office. They have been an essential way for me to communicate with residents and have dialogue with you. This was especially true during the pandemic, when city offices were not open to the public and we held virtual town meetings. I am so grateful for the ongoing collaboration between UNH's mayors, advisory commission, and my office. I sincerely hope the collaboration continues. I would like to recognize the successful series of events the city held over the summer, including the return of our fireworks spectacular, the Savin Rock Festival, our summer concert series, the farmer's market, and the Juneteenth celebration. Since our last town hall meeting, there has been quite a few ribbon cuttings, including Hartford Health Care, Go Health Urgent Care, Art West Connecticut, T.L. Laundry Map, The Break Wall, and Christine's Creations as West Haven's business community continues to grow. West Haven's real estate is on fire. As you know, a lot of the houses are turning over pretty quickly in West Haven, throughout West Haven. In the next few months, make sure to mark your calendars for these events. On Friday, October sixth, at noon, the City of West Haven will celebrate Italian Heritage and honor State Representative Charlie Ferraro as Italian American of the Year. Additionally, we did just honor Hispanic of the Year, which was nine fifteen twenty-three, and it was when we chose Deputy Fire Chief Zias. On October the eighth, at eleven a.m., the City of West Haven will hold its third annual West Haven Fire Emergency, nine eleven ERS, Police and Health Expo in Old Grove Park. We don't know yet, but right now, keep checking back to our website because there is supposed to be pouring rain on Saturday. In fact, the Italian Heritage, there was going to be an event there in Hampden, but they've actually already called it today and postponed it to Sunday. So keep tuned, check our website as far as for the Public Safety Expo. On October twenty-eighth, at five p.m., West Haven United, Arts West, and the City of West Haven will present Halloween on the Green. On November twenty-sixth, the city will hold its tree lighting. Keep an eye out for more details. Once again, thank you for attending and participating in this important event. Before we begin, I would like to extend a warm thank you to UNH student and MAC Chair Brian Cow for moderating this event, all volunteers from the Mayor's Advisory Commission for your important role in making this event a success, and to MAC Advisor Dr. Chris Haynes for your invaluable leadership. Thank you to my office staff and all the past UNH students who have helped make this town hall series possible for the last six years. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing your questions.
Before we begin to take your questions, I would like to briefly reiterate the rule. Each questioner will have sixty seconds to ask a question. Please, as I've made, answer all questions uninterrupted. We will give fifty seconds to ask a follow-up question if you so choose. Additionally, for those on Facebook Live, please put your question in the chat. I hope all of you asked and you remain respectful throughout the evening. We will now take the first question from the audience.
I have more of a statement instead of questions. Hello, my name is Sammy Rivera. I live here in West Haven. I own two businesses here in West Haven. And basically, I'll use my one minute for what I wrote. Sometimes people come into your life and you have no idea the positive impact that person will have on you and your family. Nancy has almost turned into a grandma figure for my two daughters, and they absolutely love her, and I will always be grateful for that. Years ago, I never knew Nancy. I didn't know who she was. Back when she was running for mayor, I was a town committee member, and I was the only one not supporting her nomination. Out of curiosity, she came up and asked why. My answer was simple. I just did not know who she was. From that moment forward, she did everything that she could to earn the mayor's office and show me and everyone who this young lady at heart was. Becoming the first female mayor in West Haven was not good enough for her. She wanted to help make West Haven great again. There have been many things that have gone well for West Haven during her tenure, and all of us should applaud the good things for sure and realize who in fact caused the bad things. It's not all her. However, no matter how good or bad things get, she always had a positive attitude and positive outlook for the City of West Haven and for its great future. Can I have five seconds more? I am thankful for the great memories and the opportunities you have given me to serve this great City of West Haven in any small way I can. I will always consider you my friend. I love you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you for that. Now we move on to a pre-succulent question. What are the differences are you most proud of and what regrets do you have as you complete your final term as mayor?
What am I most proud of? I think one of the things, I mean, I'm very proud, first off, of my team, my staff, and the employees here because they've all worked well and, you know, we haven't had many issues or anything like that. I'm very proud of the fact that financially, we have turned the city around. The city had, when I got in, we were left with a eighteen million dollar deficit bonding package by the previous administration. We were left with a one-point-seven million dollar deficit in FY seventeen, and we were left with a revenue shortfall of eight million dollars that was built into the eighteen budget. It took a lot of work, a lot of sacrifice, but we got there. And every single budget after that, we had a surplus. And in fact, we are waiting for the audit for FY twenty-two, and it's projected over two million dollar surplus in FY twenty-two, and FY twenty-three will have a surplus as well. I think it's very, very important that we continue down this path because that is the most important thing. We don't want deficit after deficit. Number one, the rating agencies don't like it, the residents don't like it, and it's very hard for, you know, cash flow, as we call it, because obviously, if you have a hole in your bank account, you're not going to be able to go there if you have an emergency or anything like that. But I will say, we did, you know, obviously, we had challenging times, and that was during COVID. And we had to think very quickly out of the box because, again, to keep revenue up and City Hall moving, even though it was closed to the outside, to public, everyone came to work, everyone worked their hardest. We did the tax office, and actually Patty Whore about the clerk is here. We used the windows so that this way people were not coming into City Hall because you didn't know, at that point in time, there wasn't a vaccine that was ready yet or anything like that. So we collected taxes that way. Anne Marie Gradoya did assessments and whatever she had to do that way. And so it was a tax office, the clerk's office, and the assessor's office that worked together. A platform was built, and it definitely worked out. So I was very proud that under the most difficult times, we all worked together, we got through it, and we kept moving on forward. And I think that that is very, very important.
Do you have any regrets?
Regrets? No, I really don't have any regrets. Anybody can say, well, you shoulda, woulda, coulda, but you never know. Whatever position you take in life or whatever you do, what's going to happen tomorrow? None of us do. None of us have a crystal ball. So you gotta kind of understand there's going to be good times and there's going to be bad times, and that's with everybody's life. You know, not just here in City Hall, anybody's home, life, whatever. There's good times, there's bad times. What we can all pray for is that we end up having more good times and less bad times.
Dale Isle on Ninety-Honey Pot Road. I'd like, I have two questions and a comment. My two questions, number one, do you have any information about the grant for the brewery? Because it was in the paper. The second question, did anyone look at the camera out there? Because it's not, I don't think it's focusing on the voting, you know, the voting thing they have there. If somebody could look at that in my comment.
Okay, let me answer the questions first. So I will defer to Patty. Maybe you can find out if the camera is, you know, all set as far as that goes so that we can move forward. And what was the other one?
The grant.
The grant for the brewery, there's more than one grant. We will know much more on Friday morning because it goes to the Bond Commission in Hartford, and they'll go through, we're not the only ones there, so there's usually a few pages, but usually it's under two hours. And then, at that point in time, they will either approve the bonding or not approve the bonding. We are very, very hopeful that they're going to approve the bonding. We've been working on this for over two years, and we even scaled it down, and then it got pulled out, but then we brought it back. I still believe in my heart of hearts, and so do most of the West Haven residents, that this will be a good economic development project for our city, and not only our city, but all the restaurants that are here. Because breweries, as you know, I call it pick food, appetizers, whatever, you're not going to get a full meal like you get at, you know, Lorenzo's or Beijetti's or any of the other wonderful restaurants we have. So I am very, very hopeful that when it comes, that we will all be very, very happy, and we can all go there and have a drink one night once they're up and running. And now I've got a comment.
Okay, now it's my comment. My comment is, I want to thank you so much for all your hard work. It's, I know it's been difficult at times, and I think that you've been wonderful. I also want to thank your city clerk and the tax office because they're here, those ladies, they've been absolutely great. But I just want to let you know that I think you did a wonderful job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, the brewery is one, and I have been working on that for a very long time. We also have done a lot of different projects throughout, and again, some of them even during COVID, believe it or not. One of the biggest, I don't know, renaissance, renovations, whatever you want to call it, is the Allentown section of the City of West Haven. And I know that Mr. Beckerman, before I got in, they had already secured parcel one, if you will, whereas there's housing there, there's retail, there's credit union, U.S. Alliance there. And then, when I got in, they were looking to do parcel number two. And I think it's been such a transformation down there. And I myself, because I had spoken to Mr. Beckerman and also Gary Latendry, and they worked together on these projects, and I wrote a letter to the head of Hartford Health Care asking them, please, please, will you bring your Hartford Health Care to here, to West Haven? And it took a little while, but it did come. I was invited to the ribbon cutting. I was very, very excited. What excites me most is you never can pick a time to get sick. So usually, if you're going to get sick, it's usually in the middle of the night. They are twenty-four seven. And it's not like a hospital kind of thing that you're going to wait for hours and hours. The place is absolutely beautiful inside. There's plenty of parking in the back. It's clean. It's nice. And again, if you're sick on Christmas Day, go there. My son, after it had opened, after I'd, a week or two later, he had something in his eye, and he had to go to work in a couple hours. I said, go there. He goes, well, are, you know, are they going to treat me? And they'll treat everybody. And he went there. They took very good care of him. They had him do a follow-up, and he ended up recovering fine. And as I said, and I love the idea that it's so close, it's in Allentown, but pretty much, I know myself, I can get there in five, ten minutes, you know, it's not a heavy lift for me. Well, sure, it may take a little bit longer, but even that. So I think that, you know, that type of development is exactly what we need. Plus, we've had several restaurants come, which is going to be great when the brewery comes because, again, as I said earlier, different restaurants up and down, you know, whatever, whether it's Beach Street, whether it's Campbell Avenue, wherever it's going to be. I think that that's important, and it will help the business owners. And that's what we have to think about because, again, if every, if all taxes come out of the real estate, out of that type of thing, and we don't have economic development, the tax base keeps going up. So I think it's very, very important to have other businesses here that we can all share in and we can go to, and obviously, go there and spend money because that's what you want. You do want to do that, right? The public space. Well, first off, on certain events, you know, like fireworks night, I'll start with that one because that's our biggest one. They will, you know, close and more than likely, I don't know if they'll close the actual operation, but in front or anything like that, they will make sure that the fireworks can be seen and all of that. So I don't think that one would be a problem. I know that we've done the heart walk there, and the heart walk would not be a big problem either because that's more early in the morning. I know that Liz Johnson does dominate the day, and that's usually, I haven't looked yet for the date, but it's usually in the month of October, again, earlier. It's like an eight-eight-thirty walk, and she does that to point out and remember her son who passed away. And so, again, I don't think there would be a problem. Now, if they wanted to have it, you know, for weeks or something like that, that would be a different story. But right now, the different events we have, most of them are early enough that the brewery wouldn't even be open or ready to serve. The, what kind of inquiries? Well, first off, I don't know what the public works inquiries are because they don't come to my office. So, again, so they want to know about the public works inquiry? Because, again, that doesn't come to me. So are they any more specific? Like, is there a specific problem or issue or? The lack of transparency. Well, I know that I've tried to be very, very transparent at my team since I got in. In fact, I was just talking to Sammy Rivera about, when I first started as a councilwoman, and I was councilwoman for ten years, I couldn't believe that there wasn't any video, no recording. You had to hope that whoever was scratching down the minutes, that they were correct and accurate. So I kept pushing, and I had people come in and videotape, but then there'd be issues with that. Long story short, once I became mayor, I says, okay, it's going to happen now. We couldn't do it, you know, immediately, but I said, it's very, very important that both Harriet North and the council chambers are equipped with video, with sound, with screens, if you need it, any type of thing, so we can present the people at home, if you're sick or you just don't want to go out. You can, it will be live streamed, so you can see it. I am so happy to say that this room is completely finished, I've been told. I guess there's a few more days of something else they have to do, but it's minor. The city council chambers is half done, but not complete yet. But that's supposed to be completed in the next week or two. So I think, right now, I think that's a major accomplishment here because we went from when I got on the council in oh-five to it was paper and pen, and that was it, to now we have the high-end stuff, the good stuff, it's right in the wall. I don't hear the, you know, how you get that background noise. Everything seems to be good. So I think that it was well worth the investment. There hasn't been anybody that wants to take charge of that, and that's unfortunate because I know there was someone that did take charge of it in the beginning, and we did get awards for it. But then it stopped, and I don't remember if it was during COVID or right after COVID. So, again, it's not the mayor who usually runs Sustainability Connecticut. It's usually a group of people within the city. And we did have it. We even got one of the, I want to say it's a silver one, I think. There was a, because all the different things, same thing with trees. We also have the little leaf. We got that three times too since I've been in. So, but again, I don't know if somebody is going to pick it up, like, after I leave or decide, but I think that if somebody's very, very interested, they should look into the initiative and get a group of people together. That's what starts grassroots. The MARB. I think that sounds nicer than Marb, but I like that. We have, unfortunately, been under Marb since I took the office. I just didn't know at that moment. I found out the next day. Reason being, the previous administration had evoked deficit bonding on, I would call Thanksgiving Eve because that's exactly what it was. I got in the following week, and this was already done. And unfortunately, because it was already done, we automatically were put under Marb. We would not have been automatically put under Marb if that hadn't happened. We would be under what they call the MFA C, which has less stringent rules. And so we're still under Marb. We're working with them. In fact, we... We, we're, we're working with them, in fact, we, we're supposed to have a meeting tomorrow, but they changed it to October the 12th. We are making a lot of inroads, there's a lot of problems, you know, different, we call them controls, but we have to redo everything and take a look at everything and make sure. So we have several different agencies here, if you will. One is called Providity, and the other one is Whittlesley. And Whittlesley is an accounting firm, CPAs, and they're going through and they're analyzing different documents, and they, they're going to be here, they will not be leaving, I heard, until like two years from now. But they're going to go through everything, and I think that that's the best way to do it, because if you piecemeal it, well, let's just do this section or that section, it's going to be a problem. And one thing, I, you know, again, I, I'm assuming everyone here lives here. I know I live here and I'm not going anyplace, or like my house, or like my neighbors, so I'm not going anywhere. I want West Haven to succeed. I think that's very, very important. And I know we get a bad rap, you know, more times than sometimes we deserve, whether it's truthful or not, I think West Haven is a wonderful city. We have wonderful people here. They're very, you know, we, we have the longest stretch, a beautiful beach, we have Beach Street being razed now, so there'll be, you know, there's, I think there's 12 condos there, and supposedly, because I had asked about the price, the price is around, I think, $650 to $750, depending on the unit and what, what it gives. They're also going to build a restaurant there, is what I'm told, they haven't taken the permits out, but they have, they are looking to build a restaurant. That's why they needed to raise the road, because that was very important. And I put the raising of Beach Street as my number one ask, because what happens is the state delegation comes to you in January, and they ask you, give us one, two, and three, and then we'll fight for the money for you. So, one was Beach Street, never even cared about two and three. Beach Street was very, very important. And we don't want our beaches flooding, we don't want that road flooding or any of that. So I think that that was a good use for that, that, those dollars that came, and we're hoping that the raising of it will be done by the end of the year, if not January, and then we can move forward there.
Next question is, you suggest that any DCO is back to the table regarding their intent to move to West Haven. What change could be made for this, what chance of the deal expansion?
Okay, and what deal are we talking about?
Any DCO?
Oh, NEPCO again. I honestly hope, I have to believe, and that's why everything hinges on Friday, because the bonding, that's the bonding commission, they meet in Hartford. We're not the only one, as I said earlier, on the list, but it is, it is very important to get the brewery here and get it up and running. And so I, I'm, again, we'll, we'll know more once the gavel comes down after the bond commission meeting, which is supposed to be held on Friday.
Next question from the page of the night. Can you elaborate on the estimation of free talk with Paul E. Boyd, including the application of Lee Tierney and Tom McCarthy?
First off, Tom McCarthy didn't resign, I just seen him today. What he is doing is, he's actually doing two positions most days, so he, he pops his head into public works and he has a good understudy that is keeping his eye on everything. But he also is helping as an executive assistant, so Tom McCarthy is still gainfully employed. And who else was it there?
Lee Tierney.
Lee Tierney is, he's just doing special projects for us, that type of thing. We have a, a corporation council, he is attorney agillo.
Next question is, what evening is going to happen to the city's poll election pilot program, what's the intent, and what will citizens be expected to pay for?
Well, here's the interesting, I'm not the expert on that, that's Tom's side of the fence, if you will, but I do know one thing, they are looking for another year of, of, like an extension of the pilot program now. I haven't signed the contract yet, so it's not official, so once I get that, then I'll read it and find out, you know, what's in it. I know that, I know people have complained about it, some people and some people haven't. I didn't have a problem with it, it didn't seem like a big heavy lift for me. I got my orange bag, I got my green bag, I got, and the green bag, I don't put out a lot, be honest with you, I, I've spent more time here in the past month than I have at home, so I bring food with me type of thing. I don't, I don't know if people are worried or, or a problem, what, but again, we have to think of doing something. And if we just continue to go, I mean, you know, it, it, there's only so much room to put this garbage. So I'm hopeful they work something out, because I know they are looking for a one-year extension, and then they're going to entice people with certain, you know, I don't know whether it's going to be monetary or whatever, but they're going to entice people to come in and, and try the program. As I said, I, I didn't see that it was a big deal. I mean, I had the one orange bag, the green bag every, maybe, sometimes a month, two months, depending, and you need a garbage can with a lid on it, so that the animals don't get in. So I, I don't have the problems with it that, you know, maybe other people do. And maybe, again, we'll do some more education, because I do think that helped that night when we had the room filled. A lot of people learned a lot when they had told me, you know, afterwards.
Another question, would the whole of that Sheldon Bones Russia remained involved in standing up to remain public or is it?
Well, if we're talking about it now, it sounds like it already is public. I don't, I have not signed anything for Sheldon Bones, I have not met with Sheldon Bones, doesn't mean that it may or may not happen, but right now, I would say it, it's not there yet.
Another question from the page of the night. How do you think your administration has done in achieving the charter and method strategy outlined into P O C D, and which priority ones have been public?
P O C D. Well, I don't know how much we, we did get done, and again, that's not my side of the fence, it's hard when people do ask questions, because I don't have every single answer. I do know one thing, during COVID, none of it got done, so, and people weren't going out, people were staying in their houses, as I said earlier. So I would attribute at least two years out of the six I had to that. So again, I'm sure we will get back working on it, they do have different things. One of the things too, is allowing where the brewery wants to go, that is an accepted practice there, that will not be a problem. So again, that we are trying our best to work, but it was, those COVID couple of years were definitely tough. But we're, I'm sure that, you know, the next administration, whoever that may be now, when they come in, they're going to have their own ideas, and, and, you know, I only have not even two months left now. So they will, I'm sure, venture forward and, and do, you know, different things that maybe I would or would not have done.
What, are you right to P O C D?
I can't.
What's P O C D?
What? Plan of con, conservation and development, plan of P O C D. See, I knew what it was called and I have read it. I.
Is there anything to add to that last question?
I have a question. I have a question about in the Haven and, and the street that are still closed. I was wondering if they'd have plans to reopen Main Street and Water Street, and what about the sections of Richard's Place and Center Street that are closed off? Are those going to become open again? And one last question. They gave a sweetheart deal to these developers on that park that's on Bayview Place, can we get that back, or is that gone?
No, the park is gone, because it wasn't only monetary, there were certain permissions and stuff we had to get in order to move it from one place to another, the park. So it's established on, I believe it's called Contact Park over in West Shore, it is over there. As far as the roads, I know that I have to meet actually with the Haven Group next week, so I, again, will know more, because I am just as anxious as everyone else. I mean, there's been, again, I understand COVID affected them too, same thing affected all of us, but now COVID's over, hopefully. Hopefully, we've just got to get a vaccination a year and we're all good. So I am hoping that something, whether, whatever development or bring forward something, because it has been a very long time. When I got into office, it was still, you know, the buildings were still up, but nothing much, you know, happened, and it didn't. So it started, I want to start, I say, they came to John Picard, Mayor John Picard, at the very, very end of his term, I want to say like October-ish or something like that. And then Ed O'Brien was mayor for the four years, and once again, they knocked down a building or two here or there, but not much happened. And now we've been trying to work with them as well. So I am hoping that we get something there, because it's a huge piece of property. If, if developed right, it could be something great for West Haven, I believe, and it definitely looked better than what's down there right now.
One follow-up question. I know that they held off in ceding, what is it, Water Street to them, does that also pertain to Main Street and those other side streets?
What do you mean, ceding, you said, or?
Give, letting them have that is part of their parcel. They decided that they would hold off. I guess the developers were pushing to get that, is part of their parcel, and they held off saying, no, that's still our public way, our public street. But did they do that with the, with the side streets, I was wondering?
I, again, I don't know, because I, I've walked through there, I've been through there, but I don't know where it is right now. As I said, they have already asked for a meeting with me for next week, so it'll be easier, I'm sure, once I meet with them to find out what they're, what they're going to do. But I, that's been, I don't want to say it's vacant all the time, because there were houses on it, but people had to move out, they, you know, boarded them up and everything else. We had a lot of crime down there in the beginning, and that's one of the reasons why we had to fence the property, because seriously, on the weekends, they'd start a fire on Friday, they'd put that out, then Saturday, they'd start another fire. And we are very lucky that no one got hurt, I mean, or worse, passed away.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next question, could the community in the other Haven more?
Well, that's, I don't have anything more than what I just told this gentleman. I'm meeting with them next week. I don't know if they're keeping the property, I don't know if they're going to sell the property. See, it's hard, with, with the brewery, it's different, the city owns that property. We do not own the Haven parcel, so we don't have a whole lot of jurisdiction over it. Obviously, if they decide to build something, then they'd have to go through P and Z and all the different boards and commissions before they would be able to.
Next question is, given that you said a cost of transfer, $2 million from the ARPA funds to the corporate company, could you explain why this is happening and what would suggest for the city's financial balance?
So they transferred $2 million from, because again, I'm not the finance director, I know David Taylor is the acting finance director, and I know that they moved money, but as far as, I understood the council blessed it, so they had to vote for it in order to go along with the ARPA money.
A live revelation cited in the newspaper today that your PWD director made a $85,000 deal with an individual on trial for fraud. Was there any dissimilar to that following procedure and wasting of ARPA funds that should have helped citizens of West Haven?
Now, who is this? Because I didn't read the paper this morning, so.
Is it your public works director? PWD director?
The public works director is Tom McCarthy, and so I, is that who they're talking about? Because it got, give me a name, I mean.
Name? Without a name, I don't know, because he was with me most of the day today, so I don't
know.
What is your books, books are, what would you like people to remember of you and your time in the office?
Me and my time in the office, well, number one, I love the idea that I'm the first female mayor, I think that that's great, I think it should have happened long ago, but I, I feel, I feel very honored to be able to hold that position, so I, I'm very, I was very excited about that. And again, as I said, were there missteps? Yes. Was there COVID? Absolutely. But we did our best, we made sure financially the city is sound, that we are moving forward, people are coming here, people are interested, people are taking jobs here, because they want to work here, they, they like West Haven, they live in West Haven, and it makes it a lot easier, and it'd be close if you got to go to work. So I think that we did the best we could with the items we were given, as I said earlier, the, you know, the deficits and everything else were a real problem, and deficit bonding. Deficit bonding, when it was first invoked by the prior administration, it, the interest alone was over half a million dollars every single year, and it was for 10 years. Now granted, it was, it'll eventually come down as the years go by, but I think it's only been five years, so I think we're only halfway there. So that, that, you know, that's a problem as well. But again, I want to say, I totally respect our residents, our residents are very resilient, they understand, and they, they, they come through too, when, if there is a crisis, to help. We did get, manage COVID, wasn't easy, but we did, and we did our absolute best to make sure that we kept everybody well. We made sure that the residents had what they needed, whether it be bringing them COVID tests once they were made, because in the beginning, remember, we didn't know what to do, because none of us, there was no antidote, there wasn't, you know, any kind of injection, there was nothing for a little while there, you kind of just had to stay on and have the mask. So I, I believe that in any administration, you're going to have the good, and then you're going to have some not-so-good. I would still argue that no matter what happened, and we already know about what happened with the COVID funds, I still believe that the good that we did for the last six years was far better than any of the, the other nuisances, if you will, or problems that we had, whether it be COVID or the COVID funding.
Thank you for the reference. Next question, immediate update on what your administration has done to prevent the misuse of public funds?
Well, the first thing we have is a lot more oversight now. The problem we always had is sometimes we don't have enough people, or we don't have enough employees, somebody gets sick, something happens. So now, as I said, we have a group called Whittlesley, and they are the ones, they have already been here a year, I believe it's a year now, and they are going through transactions and different things like that. Then we have, they call it a financial manager, but it really is a firm, and it's called Providity. And they are the ones now, that when Whittlesley says, this needs to be changed, they're the ones who are going to change it. So I'm hoping when they get done, controls will be in place, people will watch people, there'll be a chain of commands, there'll be people who don't sign vouchers without looking at them, because we've had that problem as well, and that's a big problem, because if you don't, if you just put your signature on something and don't even read it, or don't even find out what it's about, how do you know it's correct? So again, I still, you know, I think that, yes, there were problems, but a lot of municipalities have problems, we're not the only one, and I do believe that the good definitely did outweigh the bad.
Next question is, residents feel they have been left in line from your absence at city council meetings. Unfortunately, many of you believe this will be you also remembered about, so do you have thoughts on this?
Well, first off, there's no mandate that the mayor has to go to the city council meeting. The city council meeting is exactly that, it's for the city council and to do legislative things. If there is something that I have sent in, or I have, like with the brewery, for instance, I came to the meetings, I absolutely did. There were meetings that I've stayed here until close to midnight. When I was on the council, I even stayed, I think the longest one was quarter after one. But I was on the council, so that's a whole different story. That being said, a mayor usually doesn't go to every single council meeting, they just don't. If there's something they need, if they want me there, all they have to do is send me an email, hey, look, we want to discuss this, we need you here, because you know more about it than we do. And I'm just using that as an example, that's fine. But there's other work I have to do, and again, if I come to a council meeting and they don't ask me any questions, and I just sit there, and as I said, nowhere in the charter does it say, you have, you're supposed to go to a few of them, I go on to more than a few.
Next question, what impact do you think your administration has left the remaining Democrats in the city, as they say that has been a bad impact on future voters?
Okay, I don't understand, that it's got to do with just the Democrats, or?
They want to know if that's left on the Democrats in the city, or is it, is it a bad impact on future voters?
Still not understand, so they're.
Next question, what impact do you think your administration has left on the remaining Democrats in the city, as they say that has been a bad impact on future voters?
Um, I don't know if it's going to be a bad impact on future voters. You know, you watch, you watch television and, you know, some places change, some places don't. And as far as the, the Democrats, I mean, that's a decision they get to make. First off, just because you have a D or you have an R, when you go into the voting booth, that doesn't mean that's who you're voting for. So everyone needs to remember that as well. The outcome is in the election or the results of the election. So as I said, it's important, important to vote, it's important to go there if you can, rather than an absentee ballot, because an absentee ballot should be for the reasons, and I know they're looking for, you know, you know, a list of reasons and make it easier. The problem is, when you watch the The problem is, when you watch stuff like what we've, well, I've watched on television, and there's irregularities with absentee ballots, that could be a problem. So, I, I, again, I always try, I think I've only voted AB once or twice, and it was only because I booked and I wasn't gonna be here. So I had no choice. So I did the AB. But normally, I go to the polls. And I'm normally the one, like, I don't know if I'll do it this year, but I'm usually there at like 5:06, 'cause I have this big thing about being the first one to vote at Malloy School. So it's just my thing. If somebody needed my help afterwards, that's pretty much what we're saying. I would help them. Whoever that mayor may be. Being, it's been very exciting. It's like no other job or position I've ever had, or a lot of people haven't had, because every day is different, every hour is different. You'll come out in with this whole big plan, and then boom, by 10 o'clock, it's like, nope, we gotta go here. We gotta go do, we gotta do this. We gotta put that aside, and then hope you have time to do it. But it was always, you know, you didn't sit there and go, wow, it's only 12 o'clock and I got, it goes fast. It does go fast. And it was very, very enlightening. I have learned a lot. As I said, we have wonderful people that work in City Hall. They're very, very helpful. They come to work eager to learn. We've hired a lot of new people. And it, it's been very good. And I'm, I'm still very excited. And if I had it to do all over again, I absolutely still would do it.
First of all, Mayor, before we forget, we should say thank you. Before we forget, we should say thank you to you for your years on the council and your years as mayor.
And three on the Ethics Board.
And on the Ethics Board. So heartfelt thank you to you for your work. A question on the Havens, I know we sort of beat this down a little bit. Is that still owned by the Simon Group?
I don't know who it's owned by. Again, it was owned by the Simon Group. But I know John Dionis has not been part of that project in well over a year. So I don't know exactly who has the reins of it, but as I said, they said they're gonna come and meet with me next week. So we'll see.
Because there was a developer that offered to purchase that property, which I know the city doesn't have any control over it.
Right.
But he did offer to purchase the property, and, uh, I think for about 50 million.
Well, he hasn't come to me. I assure you.
Well, if you'd like him to come to you, we, they'll send him to you.
Mm-hmm. Send him my way. That would be better.
Okay. But, uh, so I'm just curious as to who, who won't, you'll know that next week.
Yes.
And looking forward, what would you recommend, uh, that we, for the future of the city? Um, what would you recommend to the mayor that they should or should not do? Or any projects you would like to see, or whatever?
Well, the projects I'd like to see is economic development continuing. And like I said, we kinda had a hiatus because of COVID, because nobody was gonna buy anything, do anything, or build anything during that. I mean, we had some small projects, but not anything huge. So I think that that still is, I do believe, because we have to worry about our residents' tax base. And the more economic development you have, the better we could control the residents' tax base. But if we don't have any economic development, well, then it all goes on the back of the taxpayers. So we have to do our best to keep pushing and getting projects in here that are good projects and that people will, first off, come and enjoy and spend money. But it also will clean up certain areas, because, let's face it. And when the brewery comes, I'm gonna be very positive, when the brewery comes, it'll look beautiful down there, because that area will be cleaned up then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's one other thing too, that I did wanna put that, I wanna let people know what we did. So during COVID though, we did do one thing that I thought was important. And not only during COVID, but even afterwards, and to this day, because we got a food ass this afternoon. We unfortunately do have a lot of people in this city that they call it food insecurity, that they don't have food, they don't have the money to go out, whatever, you know, hindrance that they have. So we fill, uh, we would go and we worked with Vertical Church, Paul Bronson. And in fact, they, um, they just opened, they call it Dream Center. And you can go there, no questions asked. They have clothes, they have food. They have all different things there that you just go in, just like it's a grocery store. The only difference is, you don't have to pay for it, and you can take it home. And, um, myself and Tom McCarthy are very much a part of this. We worked with, um, Pastor Vance and also Paul Bronson. We did many ventures from, you know, not only delivering food or doing things like that, but, um, we gave out turkeys at Thanksgiving with all the fixing. And we'd stand up there, and I was very lucky, because I remember one, one day that was freezing cold. But other than that, it really wasn't terrible. I'm not a fan of the cold weather. So I, I think that that's, um, very important too. And I know that the residents of West Haven, one thing we do do good is that if somebody's in trouble, they got a bad thing going on, whatever it may be, they do rally the people and they help those residents. So that's something I think we all should be proud of as, as residents of West Haven. Thank you. One last one. This'll be the worst one. Watch. My favorite or most special? Let me see. Oh, there, there were quite a few, I have to tell you. Well, being sworn in, and, um, as first female mayor, that wa, that was pretty exciting. That, that was definitely very exciting. Um, I know that, uh, we, we, we had to pivot again, thinking about it, because before you know it, it will be Christmas. And that was, um, during COVID. So we couldn't, um, you know, we couldn't have anybody sitting on Santa's lap or doing any of this. So we, Santa Claus came though, and there was a whole, um, show and episode and everything else that, uh, we, we videotaped, and it was all on our website. That was, that was definitely pretty exciting. The other thing was, um, that I must think about is Gabby Marillo. Gabby Marillo, you talk about somebody who's a trooper. That's her. She lives in West Haven, and she is a tough young lady. Unfortunately, there would, um, she is disabled now, and it's because of a driver that hit her from behind. She had just gone to Disney. That was her dream. She wanted to be one of the Disney thing. And she was only there, I think, a week or two. And she's paralyzed from, um, like here down. And I'm hoping that one day, and I have seen things that I've watched now on television in other countries, that they put some kind of electrodes and with this artificial intelligence, this is, I, I've heard the bad things, but this is the good thing. They use that to try to get people to walk again or be able to move their arms or whatever. She's a beautiful girl. She still is very spirited, smiles all the time. She's got her, her, um, dog, and, uh, she's very excited, and she's not gonna give up. And I think that's important. And she's a West Haven resident through and through. Parents are too. And I really think that that, that's what we're made of here. But thank you all, and thank everybody for coming. We appreciate it. We do.